Like the call to order the regular meeting of the Cauquash Parish Police Jury for Thursday, September 21st, 2023. You would take a moment to please silence your cell phones. If there's an item on tonight's agenda that you wish to speak on, I need you to fill out one of the blue slips there that you'll find at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you can turn it in to anyone here at the staff desk. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Abshire. Please stand.
Bow your heads.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Bartik.
Here.
Vice President Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Reshore.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Abshire. 1A is at 5:45. We'll come back to that. I'm sure Mr. Brain will let me know exactly at 5:45. 2A, appearance by Mr. Les Blanchard, candidate for Cauquash Parish Sheriff. If you would, Mr. Blanchard, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Les Blanchard and my address is 1514 South Chateau Circle, Lake Charles, Louisiana. Thank y'all for having me and I love seeing perfect attendance. That makes me smile. Glad everybody's here. Just want to tell y'all a little bit about me. Just in, for those of you that don't know me very well, I just retired from the sheriff's office in July after 30 years of service and two months. I did an extra two months just to make sure they got my time right so we wouldn't have any problems. I did 30 years at the sheriff's office, but I'm not done yet. That's the main thing I want to let y'all know. I retired to get out and meet people, develop relationships, because I've always been in the trenches my entire career. I started at the age of 19 and I worked from the ground up. I started in corrections, did some time on patrol, did time in narcotics, but the majority of my time was spent in violent crimes, dealing with death investigations, you know, things of pretty gruesome nature for the most part. And what that taught me was a true appreciation for life and not just life, but the quality of life. And that's what I'm about. So I offer 30 years of law enforcement experience, but I'm also a father of four. So I also bring to the table a lot of life's experiences. And I can tell you, I thought I was accomplished whenever I was able to graduate college while working full-time, 12-hour shifts in the jail. But I can tell you the true accomplishment's being a father of four, because each one of them is different and wonderful in their own way. So I faced a lot of adversity in my life and a lot of challenges, working long hours and being away from the family. But I can tell you, the true sacrifice are our families. And that's really what I want to focus on. I want to focus on our deputies and their families, because if we can improve their quality of life, our public service is going to improve tenfold. And that's what I'm about. So I am looking very forward to this. We have change coming, whether we want it or not. The sheriff's done a great job for a long time, but he's going home. He's tired and I understand. That's a lot of years in that chair. So I'm looking forward to this and I'm really looking forward to working with people. That's what I've always done. If you talk to anybody that I've ever led in those divisions, they'll tell you, I'm a worker with people. I don't expect people to work for me. And I expect to do that with you guys as well. I look forward to that and I'm really open to insight from everyone. I think we're going to do a great job in rebuilding the trust with the public and getting out and meeting them and developing these relationships. So thank y'all for having me tonight. If y'all have any questions, I'm easily accessible. You can send me a message, look at the website, whatever you need. I'm here to answer any questions for any of you. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. I think we may have some questions. Mr. Abshire?
Sure.
I don't have a question as much as I have three children of my own, so sometimes I'd rather deal with prisoners, too. But no, I know you personally and I wish you well.
Thank you.
You're a great man and I know you'll do a good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
What do you see as the most, would be the most significant challenges as sheriff if you took over that you would be faced with within the parish?
Well, the most significant challenge right now is retention. So retention is primary. That is the number-one focus overall, immediate, because that needs to be addressed right now. We're down approximately 200 deputies, but the problem is not just numbers, but it's what we've lost. And we've lost a lot of those mid-tenure employees. And that's really your mentors. Those are your ones that are training the young ones, kind of keeping them engaged. And not only that, but challenging them to be better. So we've lost a lot of that. So we're kind of heavy at the top with people ready to retire and real heavy at the bottom with youth that have, you know, those people that haven't had a lot of life's experiences to handle some of these calls that were going on. So we've got to work on retention. And I think if we focus on that and we do a good job with that, we improve that overall quality of life for them, we're not only going to draw people back that have left for other ventures, but we're also going to draw in retirees that maybe weren't ready to leave, but because of the situation, they did. And I think we'll be able to bring them back in and they can help mentor, too. And it'll kind of help with some of our personnel issues if we, through attrition, we do things right, kind of balance some schedules and move some personnel around and help augment certain things.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Blanchard from the jury? Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Okay, let's see here. Before we go to 3A, we had a blue card filled out. I'm not sure who filled that card out. If they could get with Ms. Jessica here. There's no agenda item written on the card, so we're not sure what they were wishing to speak at. Jessica, once you get that cleared up, just let us know. We're going to move forward. 3A, applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane, his staff recommends approval of four renewal applications and ratification of two special event permits. Add a motion by Mr. Abshire, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopting ordinance condemning and authorizing the demolition and removal of one manufactured home located at 5168 L.A. Little Road in Carlos. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Markantel, I'm assuming is to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there anyone, and I believe he's here, in the audience here to speak on 5168 L.A. Little Road in Carlos? Would that be you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Myers. I own the house, the trailer. I'm just about done. I had, two of my windows were too small and I just got some glass cut today to finish the back of it. And the paint I did have wasn't no good. It was bad paint, so I just went and got some new paint. And I got a trailer already supposed to be there this evening. It's not going to be first thing in the morning, so I can finish picking up the stuff to go to the parish. Dump it. And I'm on by myself working on it. I ain't got nobody else helping me besides my own self and everything. And I'm slowly doing it. And plus, you know, I got, one of my ankles is messed up and I can only move at certain speed. I had surgery down there up on it. I cut the back of my heel all up pretty bad. You know, and I'm just action just to let me add and finish it before I can finish it out. I got two windows in the back, finished painting, and I'm done. And I'll be working on the inside. I just got a bunch of sheet rock in, my mud and everything else to do the inside. I'm just slowly doing it, you know, but I can get done with it. Takes a process, you know. I'm on a slow income, you know. I only got a base of income once a month.
Okay. Mr. Barris, you have the floor, sir.
Man, you got the worst luck.
Already know, trust me.
Uh, well, Mr. Crane, when's the last time, or Mr. Robinson, whoever's at liberty to speak?
He just came out the other day. I was talking to him.
And where?
These pictures are the most recent.
Yeah, that's just the other day he called. I got that area you're cleaning up right there. I'm cleaning all that up right there. That's already been picked up and cleaned. I got it waiting on the trailer. Like I said, to put it in a trailer so I can go to the parish dump. That's the inside. I'm already remodeling on the inside of it. Why I'm going, outside and inside.
Remodeling that?
I'm redoing all of it. It's slowly, but a processing I'm doing. I done picked all that up, ready already. I'm just waiting for my trailer.
Okay, just hang tight. What, Mr. West, what, I mean, in your, in your, from what y'all know, I mean, what's, what's the likelihood of this ever happening?
I think it's up to him. I mean, it's, we've get, and this is the third, this is the third extension and will be the fourth extension, so.
Only two of them I got so far.
Either way, you're making me look bad.
Well, I'm trying to get it done by myself.
And I get, man, I get it. Get some help. I mean.
I don't ask for help. I don't act, you know.
Do you work?
I'm on a fixed income once a month because I hurt my back and I messed up my hip and my ankle.
Okay, but so, so no, you got a lot of time. You got plenty of time. You got 24 hours a day. You can work at any speed you want.
Stuff I did have.
At, at a crawl, if you did something every day, you could have this done.
Working on the inside. I done did the bathroom. I done redid.
What's your, what's the end goal with this property? What you going to do with it?
Soon as I get it done, fixed, cleaned up and everything, I'm going to stay there for certain long and I'm waiting for something to happen in my settlement. And that's any time now. If that comes, that's going to be all gone. I'm going to have a new one there. I just had to have a place where I can stay.
Where are you staying now?
I'm staying there, too, in the process of working on it. Also, I'm going to my mom's.
In that?
Well, the inside of it is not as bad. Right there, when you go through the front door, I just put a new door on. I just put that on the other day and everything. I got it, the door's been put up. I just got to get my knobs and everything, my doorknobs and my deadbolt.
Keep scrolling back up. Stop. That's, you live in that right there?
Well, that all right there is coming out. All that right there.
But no, no, the answer would be yes. You live in that right there.
All that back there, I'm redoing all that. I already got stuff for my kitchen, everything, cabinets, countertops, all that other stuff. I got it all. I just got a bunch of that in. And I'm just in the process of slowly doing it, but I'm doing it.
So if we say tear this down in 30 days and he doesn't tear it down and he commits to working on it.
Been done.
So, yes, no, we can't. We're condemning right now. If, if, if we make this motion, then he's got to tear it down because we've condemned it. What's the fire marshal say about this place?
Well, I don't think the fire marshal has been out here, excuse me, but right now it's posted unsafe. Our process is to post these structures unsafe, which prohibits you from occupying them. So he should not be occupying it when it's posted unsafe. And at that point, that's when we bring it before this jury to, to request either it be condemned and removed or they are allowed to repair and repair it.
I'm good.
You know, to, to whatever the standard that we have.
I'm going to save you a lot of time and heartache. I stick with my motion to condemn. Charlie, I mean, you can, you can stay with your mama until, till your settlement comes. If that, if that's happening any day, man, it shouldn't be long.
Three years I've been going on it right now.
Well, but, I mean, you're not even supposed to be staying in that.
I didn't even know it was unsafe. I didn't know.
You can't stay there. You can't stay there. It's not safe.
All the stuff I done bought, I'm just wasted all my money. I done bought sheet rock. I got 12 sheets of sheet rock I done bought. I done bought a five gallon of paint already.
I'm sure you'll find something to do with it.
I'm, like, what I'm going to do with it? I ain't got nothing.
I'm, I'm good, sir. He's got a question.
Mr. Andrew Pott.
So the gentleman was talking about he had some windows, you said, and doors that you?
I got two windows left to put in and they were too small and I just got some glass brought to the glass, placed some software, software glass to cut it.
When's the last time we've been out there to see if these things, if we can see movement?
The 18th. The 18th.
The 18th. Okay.
Three days.
Three days ago.
And that's the condition.
Is there any pictures that demonstrate that there's been an effort made for improvements?
You can see right there in the front. I got the shower.
It's been very.
Sir, sir, Mr. Myers, you can't speak while the other folks are speaking. We'll address you when it's your time to speak. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
According to Mr. Robinson, who's been out there, it's been very little. I mean, he's had, he's put up a piece of plexiglass in one of the windows, which is not legal. You cannot put plexiglass in the window. It's got to be a regular window.
Okay, I got, you can see the glass right there.
Sir.
Mr. Crane has the floor right now.
You're not supposed to be speaking right now. Mr. Crane, I apologize. Please continue.
And obviously, from the photographs, you can see from the inside, it's, you know, there's electrical outlets that aren't hooked up, so.
Okay.
Are you good, Mr. Andrew Pott?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tremonti.
Between when, between the 18th, when we went out there, he's corrected some windows, he's went and bought his sheet rock, he's done all this. Between whatever, when David Robinson was out there Wednesday to today, with the, just the small improvements he made, and if he doesn't live in the place while he's working on it, to save the man the expenses that he just put out, what's the harm of letting the man have another 15, in 15 days, you should be able to hang your sheet rock, address anything that they, the outlets? Because I can tell you right now, we can go to a lot of places right now in the whole parish that's unsafe to live in from the hurricane still today and people are living in them while they're working on it. And I'm not naive enough to think that everything's perfect. I'm just asking, and I see where you're at, Judd, I do. I'd be aggravated just as much as you are. But, Mr. Myers, in 15 days, you have to have a lot done, painted, glassing, electrical, some electrical addressed, sheet rock hung. Nobody wants to see you put out of your house.
Right.
You can't live there.
Yeah, I have no problem.
You going to go make sure he's, he don't live there?
No, I'm not. But I'm not going to see a man get, lose his house. I'm just, I'm just saying that. He's bought materials. He's putting forth some effort. And that's, and that's all. I yield back. Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Brain?
Wes, has he, has he pulled all of his permits for this?
I don't, I don't believe he has. I mean, I haven't checked the record to see.
So being a mobile home, I mean, it is a lot more extensive to just, you can't just go pull a permit to do it. You have to go through the fire marshal's office and all that.
Well, here's the thing. If, if it was structurally damaged and he was having to rebuild it structurally, then the fire marshal is going to have to approve that because then it's got to be rebuilt to the HUD standard. And that is all approved through the fire marshal.
You understand that?
But if you just, if you're replacing windows and doors, I mean, you can go buy a window and replace it, which is, is going to be okay.
Mr. Brain?
So, so did you answer? So I missed, I missed the answer, I guess. Did he pull permits?
I'm not sure if he has. I'd have to confirm that.
Mr. Burley.
Wes, how many extensions have we given on this property?
It's on your agenda.
Three. Okay. You're up here tonight, sir. Are you saying that you're going to have this completed, all this done in 30 days?
Because I just got my sheet rock in yesterday. I got 12 sheets in. I got my mud.
But this has been going on for over 90 days now.
I'm only on a fixed income. I can only pay a certain amount.
I understand that, but all of a sudden this week, you got all this stuff bought this week and we're.
Well, I bought some already in the middle of the week and last week, too, sir. I just got the glass.
I'm going to be straightforward with you. If this doesn't get condemned tonight and you haven't kept your word in 30 days, there's no convincing me to vote any other way than to condemn this property.
I understand that.
Okay, are there any other questions by any other jurors? Okay, currently, we had a motion to condemn or remove in 30 days by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Markantel. Mr. Barris, do you, is that still where you are, sir, or do we want to vote on that or? Go ahead.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I'm telling you, you need to get that place cleaned up. No more of this.
Sir.
This is 90 days. You're going to, after this, it's going to be 100, was it, 120 days? You're making, you're making us look like a bunch of idiots. And I know you. I know you. I mean, and I'm trying to help you, but you got to help me help you, bro.
Sir.
And I, if I hear one peep from the sheriff's office about anything else?
Sir.
Do.
You got it.
Y'all are witnessing this, right? I rescind my motion, motion to defer for 30 days.
I second it.
Okay, Mr. Andrew Pott, did you want?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Real brief. I'm, I'm a firm believer. My selling point is that you're trying. But you've heard the message from around this table of the jurors, 30 days. And I, I think this motion's going to pass unanimously tonight to help you for 30 days. But if it's not completed in next 30 days, it'll be a unanimous vote in the opposite direction.
Yes, sir.
So we want to help you and I applaud you because many times when we condemn something, there's no one here making any effort. And so I preach to my grandkids and all, those that help themselves get helped. And so.
Sir, I understand that.
So, but you've heard, I think you've heard the message loud and clear.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, he rescinded his motion. So now we have a motion by Mr. Barris to defer for 30 days. We still got a, you good with that, Mr. Markantel?
I'm absolutely.
We have a second. Is there any other further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. And Mr. Myers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming. Just please do what they asked you to do.
Yes, sir. Sure will.
And you got to understand, he's getting phone calls. People are complaining about your property. That's the reason, you know, and he, he's caught in the middle. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank y'all.
All right, we'll go ahead and go back to, let's see, 1A for 5:45. Hold a public hearing at 5:45 as advertised in accordance with law and serve as the board of review to hear protests on current tax assessments and take appropriate action thereon.
Mr. President, if I can just make an introduction.
Sure, Mr. Gab.
Sure. As you know, each time about this year, you guys sit as a board of review on assessments that are levied by Ms. Aguilar as the assessor. You review these appeals from property owners challenging the assessed values of their properties. Ms. Aguilar, as the assessor, is your advisor on these topics and she'll present each appeal to you tonight. I think we have five.
Five.
Five appeals. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gab. Ms. Aguilar, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. So as Mr. Gab said, I serve as your advisor in my capacity as the assessor. We have approximately 115,000 parcels in Cauquash Parish. We are here to discuss 10. I'm going to take the first one, which is Interfin Field Services. Is there anyone from Interfin here? Okay, so Interfin Field Services, if you look at your appeal spreadsheet, there are six parcels associated with this property. Interfin is a pipeline company that runs through multiple parishes. They have appealed their valuations for several years now, not only in Cauquash, but also in Borgard and Vernon and maybe one other parish, I believe. They have had an ongoing lawsuit with other parishes. Cauquash is not included in it. But because this is a multi-parish pipeline, they include Cauquash when they appeal. I'm going to let you know that we have already worked with Interfin on their obsolescence request on their pipelines for the inactive pipelines. And I would ask you to uphold my valuation at this time.
All right, one, one moment. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak for this company? Interfin? Also, I'll just, I'm going to go through all of them. Life Storage? Anyone here for Manor at Lake Charles?
Mr. President, we did have someone here for. Mr. President, we did have someone here for Manor. When we get that appeal, I'll explain his position.
Okay, Park Plaza Shopping Center and Phillips sixty-six.
You have Phillips.
Okay, just so we'll know, I'll call on the gentleman, Phillips sixty-six. Okay, please continue, we need to handle these probably one at a time, Sam.
We do, we do.
And.
Move to uphold.
Second. Okay, you got a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponce, second by Mr. Tremonti, to uphold her recommendation. Is there any discussion, any objections hearing none, motion carries?
Thank you. So the next property is Life Storage by Brookwood Elsie Common. This is the new storage facility on the corner of College and Common that was just completed in December of two thousand and twenty-two, and gone on the tax roll for this year for two thousand and twenty-three. The first information I got was the appeal form. I have not had any conversation with any owner or tax rep from this property. They have not contacted our office for anything at this point. So I don't have anything to work with from them. I can tell you that we have the property assessed at seven point four million dollars, and I know their hard cost at this time is about eight point three, so I feel like our number is fair, and I would ask you to uphold our valuation.
A second, I mean, a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Markantel to uphold Ms. Aguilar's recommendation. Is there any discussion, any objections hearing none, motion carries?
So the next property is The Manor, and that's Fifth Avenue Housing, and that's what Mr. Gab has for Mr. Browning.
Mr. President, Mr. Browning, Ray Browning was here. He asked that the jury consider the submissions as he's presented them. Unfortunately, he had to leave to catch an air, to catch a flight out.
Okay. Mr. Barris?
This the place that caught on fire the other day?
No. No, sir.
I was gonna say, because there's a lot less of it.
No, no, sir, this is not, this is not that place. So this is an affordable housing complex.
Right.
It was, it, it was a situation where they did present some evidence, and I believe it's in your packet. They are asking for a valuation that's quite a bit lower than what we have it assessed at. We have it assessed at one point six million dollars, they're asking for a six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar valuation. Using the income approach, which is what we are asked to use when we value affordable housing projects, it's valued like all other affordable housing projects in our parish, and our valuation, I stand by at one point six million dollars, and ask you to uphold that valuation.
Move to uphold.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Smith to uphold Ms. Aguilar's recommendation. Is there any discussion, any objections hearing none, motion carries?
The next property is Interas Sky, Lake Charles, which is the Park Plaza Shopping Center on Highway fourteen. This is where the Northern Tool, used to be the old Kroger's, Altitude, and all of that property is. That property is currently, have, has been brought back up to pre-storm values, except for the eatery that is in the parking lot. That building is still damaged heavily, and is on salvage value right now. But the rest of the property, to the best of our ability to determine, has been reconditioned, remodeled, repurposed. And so, we have brought this property back up for two thousand and twenty-three to a five point four million dollar assessment. They are asking for a four point four. However, in the meantime, that property is currently for sale for ten point four million dollars. So I would ask you to uphold my valuation.
Move to uphold.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti, and a second by Mr. Stelly to uphold Ms. Aguilar's recommendation. Is there any discussion, any objections hearing none, motion carries?
So the next is Phillips, and I'll let Mr. Cisneros have the microphone.
If you would, sir, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Mr. President, as Mr. Cisneros makes his way up, he did provide a one-page summary of his position, which is being passed out to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Gab.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Chris Cisneros. I'm the property tax director for Phillips sixty-six. My address is two three three one City West Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven four two nine.
Thank you, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here to respectfully appeal my value as assessed by Ms. Aguilar for two thousand and twenty-three. I disagree with the value that was arrived at for the refinery. I believe it is too high, and, and as evidenced, I put a one-pager together just to, to look. I know there's a lot of, of, you know, what is, what was the sales, what typically, that's what we look at when we're talking about property. And I was able to find three sales out in two thousand and twenty-two. And of the three sales, none of them would support the value that was arrived at by the assessor for two thousand and twenty-three for our refinery. And the value that the assessor has on our refinery this year is one billion, seven hundred and twenty-two million, one hundred and sixty-six dollar, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and one ninety-nine. I believe the value should be closer to four hundred and ninety million, seventy-one thousand dollars. And, and as further evidence, I also have a list of closures. In two thousand and twenty-two, Phillips closed one of their refineries in, in California. And in addition, this year, Lyondell Basse will close one of their refineries in, in Houston, on December thirty-first. They've already publicly announced that they already plan to do that. So, taken as, taken in total, there's no sales that indicate that this refinery, the size it is, the complexity it is, should be valued near one point seven billion dollars. I respectfully disagree with that. And furthermore, if the market's that good, where it would justify a one point seven billion dollar valuation, then there wouldn't be any refinery closures, and there would be a lot more sales. So, that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Bray.
So you're saying the total sales were four hundred and ninety million?
Of the value of the property.
The value.
I, I believe that's what the value should be for two thousand and twenty-three.
Is that a one billion, seven?
Yes, sir.
Seven hundred million.
Seven hundred million.
Yes, sir.
Like a third, almost.
Yes, sir. Well, the value went up this year from about one point one billion, twenty-two, to one point seven billion. So it went up probably forty percent.
Oh, well, yeah, we'll.
Yeah, okay.
Do one at a time.
Thank you.
Mr. Burley.
Mr. Cisneros, he's, the numbers in these facilities that you have listed on there, there's no way for us to know what kind of shape those were in, how much maintenance was done, and everything else on there. But if you look, same way you look at this, if you look at what was done right across the street just a couple of years ago, where Seisol spent close to thirteen billion dollars building a facility that's no bigger than this refinery, how do you justify it that way?
I, I do not understand your question.
I believe the numbers that you're throwing out there, the four million, the four hundred and ninety million is extremely low. When I look at what the construction cost was for the chemical facility across the road just five years ago, was in the neighborhood of almost thirteen billion dollars. Now, this is an older facility, Phillips sixty-six has been there a long time, but it's been well-kept. And that shows by their safety record, environmental record. They're spending money on an annual basis to keep this facility at top-notch. I just believe that your number is extremely low.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Is, are there any other questions from the jurors? Thank you, sir. Ms. Aguilar, if you would come up. State your case.
Okay, so, Mr. Cisneros is correct in that there has been an increase in valuation. For a lot of these facilities, you will get an increase in valuation as the ITIP contracts roll off, meaning they are no longer exempt, and they become taxable property. Number two is this facility, well, all facilities are personal property. So in, in Louisiana, personal property and public utilities are reported by the property owner because we are a self-reporting state. The assets that have been reported to us from Phillips is worth one point seven billion dollars. Those assets were directly reported from Phillips. Without taking obsolescence at this point, that's what the assets come up to. In prior years, and you can see in my spreadsheet that I gave you, we have granted obsolescence to Phillips based on each individual year's timeframe. And that's why there are fluctuations in valuation. The assets that are acquired, the assets that come off of ITIP, whether there's obsolescence granted, and whether or not there are disposals, all of those things play into a factor of this valuation. And so, at this point, I would ask you to uphold my one point seven.
Move to uphold.
At this time.
Okay, we still have some discussion. Mr. Abshire?
So, you're saying that they told you it was valued at one point seven?
They reported those assets that total up one point seven.
And they didn't ask for any obsolescence on?
So, I request obsolescence from the property owner or their tax rep within their company. What we don't allow is for them to take that obsolescence in their reporting. They have to request that obsolescence. What Mr. Cisneros did was take his obsolescence at the time he reported it, instead of asking for any additional obsolescence for the assets. And so therefore, we can't allow that to happen. If that were the case, I would have to let every tax rep who wants to put in lower valuations, put in lower valuations, and we don't do that. We also have a current appeal, the appeal from two thousand and twenty-two that's outstanding, and will be heard at the Louisiana Tax Commission on October fourth. So there will be a ruling on that appeal as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abshire. Are there any further questions from the jurors? Okay, Mr. Bray, we had a motion and second by someone. Do you wanna tell me who that might have come from?
Came from that side.
There we go, we got a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Markantel to uphold Ms., to uphold the recommendation. Is there any further discussion or objections hearing none, motion carries?
We are done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Bray. Three C, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on November second, two thousand and twenty-three, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. Number one, one fifty-seven Farquhar Lane in Moss Bluff. Number two, nineteen fifty Mohawk Drive, Moss Bluff. Number three, thirty-two fifty-one Berson Road in Lake Charles. Number four, fourteen ten Erica Drive, Lake Charles. Number five, thirteen eighty-six Saddlewood Drive, Lake Charles. Number six, thirty-six ten Penn Oak Court, Lake Charles. Number seven, seventy-six thirty-three Spec Drive, Lake Charles. Number eight, sixty-seven forty-two Carbina Road, Lake Charles. Number nine, ninety-four oh two Nash Lane, Lake Charles. Number ten, forty-seven ten Ogden Road, Lake Charles. Number eleven, fifty-four twenty Western Drive, Lake Charles. Number twelve, nine twelve Kingry Road in Gillis. Number thirteen, forty-seven oh nine Evangeline Highway in Starks. Number fourteen, twelve eighty-six Stephen Street in Dequincy. Number fifteen, twenty-seven ninety-nine Paul White Road, Moss Bluff. Number sixteen, fifty-two sixty-four Rock Drive in Carles. Number seventeen, fifty-five fifty Carles Drive in Carles. Number eighteen, south of twenty-two seventy-eight Hillary Drive in Vinton. Number nineteen, eight oh one Interstate ten Service Road in Westlake. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Bray. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? Four A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting, the police jury dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion, any objections, hearing none, motion carries? Four B, adopt the resolution on allowing Capitol Area Finance Authority to offer a bond program to citizens purchasing homes in southwest Louisiana.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? Five A, adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the Swissco Road and L.A. Highway one oh eight intersection improvements project. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? Five B, adopt ordinances approving the purchase of the following properties through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Move on five B.
Uh, all bullets?
Yes.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Number one, eight thirty-three Lakeland Drive, Lake Charles. Number two, sixty-eight oh seven Meadow Ridge Lane, Lake Charles. And number three, twenty-seven twenty General Patton in Lake Charles. Got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Mr. Markantel?
Got a question.
Go ahead.
Each meeting, we, we show where we're purchasing at no cost to us, of course, these properties. Once they're torn down and no longer there, of course, the property can no longer be used for anything. Does the parish become the caretakers of this property?
Yes, sir.
The mowing and keeping it clean? Okay. We can't keep the ditches mowed. So I mean, we, we are purchasing through FEMA. All these properties will, well, at the end of a year or two, I mean, this could be hundreds of properties that will be taken care of from here to eternity. And I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, are these properties, a lot of them inside the city limits?
There were.
Go ahead, Mr. Wainwright.
Yeah, these properties are taken care, we, a number of ways, and Jennifer's here, she can explain even better than me. But we put them under contract to be mowed. We also have the ability to, when ideal, and I guess the most ideal situation is to, is to give a very, really good lease to the next-door neighbor, and they take care of them. So, there's ways to manage the maintenance of these, and it far outweighs the, the damage and the, the just, you know, when, when people are in these homes in flood and having to deal with that, this program is a wonderful thing for those people. So, the little bit that we have to do to take on that maintenance is well worth it. The only other thing I'd tell you that is, you know, one of our ideas is to, down the road, is to look to put together more local version of this, where we don't maybe have that problem, where we can get those lots back in service. But if you're gonna use federal funding, you're gonna play by their rules, and, you know, it really does a good thing for those people to get this, get these buyouts.
But if we're doing them inside the city limits, why aren't the cities using this fund?
Well, those, those are handled that way as well. So we're talking about in the parish, the city.
Mr. Tremonti?
Let's see where he's going there. I'd like to see a, a, some sort of map where we can identify some of these properties. And if they are in neighborhoods, why can't we repurpose those along with maybe the neighborhood? As, as, as like, neighborhood guard, like in Graywood, as to the neighborhood gardens or something like that, some kind of green space?
Well, it's, it's very limited, the reuses of it. It's just, Jennifer, if you don't mind, maybe you can come up and.
Kobe, please state your name and position with the parish, please.
Jennifer Kobe and Grants Director. That is a possibility, but, but like Alan's saying, there, there, FEMA does have a lot of restrictions as to what you can do on those properties, but potentially, like little pocket parks, something, something very small, that is, that is something that, that could be looked at. About half of our structures are leased out. So, we, we lease them out to the, to the neighboring property owners, and they're, they're able to, to make them an extension of their yard, put a trampoline swing set, things like that, they just can't build anything on them. And, and they maintain them, and they carry insurance on them. And, and they maintain them, and they carry insurance on them.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobian. Okay, is there any further question? Mr. Barris?
And we gotta be clear that we're not, our, our public works people aren't doing the, aren't messing with these things. Okay? You got, we've got folks like, what is it, Landscape Management that does the park? I mean, it's just, it's just part of their bid, they, they include that as part of their bid, and, and they just roll it in with all of those things. It's, and all the ones that I've seen in my district, it's just straight mowing, you know, 'cause they, 'cause when, when it's done, it is a beautiful, nice piece of green grass, and it's just, they're in and out. And a lot of them, not all of them are really that, that usable for a lot of stuff. They're, they're relatively small slivers. And then like I said, you know, a lot of times, the guy on the right and the guy on the left, they go in half, and they work something out. Guy keeps his boat on this one, the guy puts the trampoline. So it really, it really works out, and I, in my experience, from the ones I've gotten to see, you know, we aren't really that put out in, in, in the big, in the big picture of it. So I yield back.
Mr. Gary?
Yes, I just was gonna say, the one on General Patton, it didn't fit the state, underneath the state guidelines to fall underneath instead of FEMA?
Correct, it's, it's in, I, I don't remember if it was in Priority 2 or Priority 3, but it wasn't near the, the Priority 1 area. But they wanted to, to participate in a buyout program, so we put them on the FEMA grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions or discussion? Did we have a motion, yeah, we did, by Mr. Hayes? No objection, we had a second by, yeah.
I'll take it.
Mr. Tremonti? No further discussion or objections, hearing none, motion carries? 6A, adopt the resolution approving a contract between the Police Jury and Star Service, Inc. of Baton Rouge for Environmental Mechanical System Professional Maintenance Services at Parish Facilities. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Bray. Is there any, any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries?
Move on 7A?
7A, approve a payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons on the general fund. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponce, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? 7B, action on bids for Crest Stone. Staff recommends the bids of Apex Aggregate Supply LLC and Port Aggregates, Inc. be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Abshire, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? 7C, action on bids for water level monitoring station parts. Staff recommends the bids of Advanced Environmental Monitoring, DBA High Sierra Electronics, Inc., Blue Water Design Technologies LLC, and OTT Hydromet Carp be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Abshire. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? 7D, adopt the resolution on qualifications for project-based vouchers. Staff recommends a total number of 19 project-based vouchers be accepted and awarded as follows. Greater Southwest Louisiana CHDO, five vouchers. Renaissance Neighborhood Development Corporation, 10 vouchers. Woodring Apartments Phase 2 LLC, four vouchers. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? 7E, adopt a resolution accepting the Mallard Junction Water Plant Repair Project as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries? 7F, advertise for requests for proposals for fiscal agent banking services.
Yes, sir, sure will.
Well, we got a, Mr. Abshire is abstaining, and do we have a, got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Bray. Is there any further discussion, any objections, hearing none, motion carries?
Mr. President, before we adjourn, just a quick question from staff on the bond commission today, our tax renewals. Is there any update, are there any questions on, on that, how that went, today's bond commission?
Mr. Andrew Ponce, I do not know the answer to that question. I will.
Jeff knows.
Oh, Jeff Vander knows, thank you.
You asked the perfect question, Mr. Andrew Ponce. Mr. Vander, if you would, state your name and position with the parish.
Jeff Vander, Ministry of Analyst, and yes, they all were approved.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Are you good? Wait a minute. We are adjourned.